Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming today, for members of the press, our friends. This news event is covering Orange County Board of Education's Special Public Meeting on Ethnic Studies and Critical Race Theory. And I also want to be sure to thank all of our volunteers and staff. Without them, this couldn't have been made possible. So, a big thank you to everyone. As many of you are aware, the California State Board of Education adopted the final and fourth draft of the Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum earlier this year, in March. AB 101 is a state mandate for ethnic studies to become a graduation requirement for public high schools, including charter high schools. All across our nation, the topic of CRT has become a very hot issue, generating both top-down legislative responses in over 20 states and bottom-up grassroots activism. As an elected government body, we at the Orange County Board of Education are entrusted with a mission to offer leadership to the community, to students, to parents, to school board trustees throughout the county. Therefore, we want to provide leadership, making sure that all trustees are educated on the two interrelated topics, so that we can better inform the public and provide guidance and leadership in our county. Specifically, we want to be educated on the proper and legal implementation of California's Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum in relation to the growing national debate on critical race theory. Unfortunately, Dr. Teresa Montano of Cal State University at Northridge withdrew unexpectedly yesterday. We have been actively trying to find a replacement. However, we are honored to have four incredible speakers, including Mr. Walter Myers III of Biola University, Professor Richard Sander of UCLA, Dr. Brandi Shufatinsky of the Alliance for Constructive Ethnic Studies, and Professor Mamon Schwartzchild of the University of San Diego. Together, our experts will provide the public and the board of trustees with in-depth knowledge, evidence-based testimony, legal and scholarly insights regarding the development and implementation of ethnic studies in our county's public schools. The forum will be educational in nature and civil in conduct. It is important to acknowledge the unmitigated controversy and disagreements over California Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum. Since 2019, the four drafts released at the state level have met with over 60,000 public comments. Parents, educators, and community members are particularly concerned with the ideological influence of CRT in the curriculum. In May, the public discourse on ethnic studies arrived here in Orange County at the Los Alamos Unified School District with a new course on ethnic studies. In Orange County, community interest and inquiries into the subject matter and its possible ties with critical race theory are growing exponentially. I believe that our community members and taxpayers deserve an open, transparent dialogue on these two important topics. Are there different ways to teach ethnic studies? How they differentiate from each other? How can we make sure the instruction is age and grade level appropriate? More importantly, are there any legal concerns or liability issues when it comes to teaching a particular kind of ethnic studies? California is governed by stringent anti-discrimination and civil rights laws and constitutional guarantees. At the same time, we also must strictly observe the First and Fourteenth Amendments to the U.S. Constitution, the Landmark Civil Rights Act of 1964, and various Supreme Court rulings on race consciousness. Our experts, coming from legal and academic backgrounds, will address these thorny and imperative questions. As a publicly elected entity, the Orange County Board of Education answers to the public and serves community members, including parents, students, and other stakeholders in Orange County. It is our sworn duty to uphold the Constitution of the United States, support our state and local laws, and ensure a quality education for all of our students. I hope that our expert forum will help us better achieve our mission and goals. In closing, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to our four experts that have stayed the course and our moderator, Joe Collins, for coming to Orange County and joining us in this highly anticipated meeting. I also want to thank our community volunteers and community partner groups for your help to facilitate this important public event. Thank you.
Very nice. I'm Lisa Sparks. I am trustee for the Orange County Board of Education, and I'll make my comments now. Good afternoon, members of the press and our Orange County community members. I appreciate your attending our press conference today. As my colleague and the Orange County Board of Education president, Mary Barky, has mentioned, we anticipate that our special public meeting this evening will serve as an educational opportunity for both the Orange County Board of Education, our local stakeholders, parents, families living in Orange County, to understand more about this sweeping ethnic studies movement. Mary spoke about the topic of ethnic studies. I want to address the elephant in the room: critical race theory, or CRT. First, no matter what the approach to critical race theory in schools, these arguments fail to address how this approach both reflects and contributes to the systemic decline of education itself. Further, it is not clear what adopting a sociological or legal theory means for an educational system. Usually, schools do not adopt, but rather teach theories and frameworks, with testable propositions, by the way. On one hand, various public entities and interest groups are pushing for CRT to be embedded in the ethnic studies curriculum. For instance, the National Education Association, America's largest teachers' union, the American Teachers Federation, and the American Medical Association have called on their members to proactively engage with CRT. These organizations have been joined by local districts such as Hayward Unified and Salinas Unified. Even more, Monterey County Office of Education wants to introduce anti-racist early education in its pre-K and kindergarten classrooms. Anti-racism is CRT's logical policy prescription. It is now possibly because of the significant public pushback that we see how many education bureaucrats and insiders are now attempting to distance the ethnic studies curriculum from CRT and deny the role that CRT plays in shaping and implementation of ethnic studies. To this goal, some have attempted to narrowly define CRT as a legal theory. This mismatch between practice and rhetoric is precisely why our public meeting will examine both ethnic studies and CRT. There are some axioms, some dogmas that are the basis of CRT, the most important of which is the fact that racism is not the consequence of individual prejudice, but rather embedded in the structure itself of our society. You've probably heard the expression "institutional racism" or "systemic racism," expressions that indicate the fact that our society is founded on laws, policies, and customs that are only apparently colorblind, while in fact, they are designed to keep non-white people from succeeding. I don't think anybody here today would deny that racism sadly continues to play a role in our society. But where the conflict arises is on whether the fact society is designed to perpetuate racism or whether we have continued to make progress toward a more just society. Thanks to the work of people of all ethnicities, color, and backgrounds in the United States, in many of its iterations, CRT seems to reject the idea that America is fundamentally a free country, born out of the lofty aspirations, and concludes instead that our country is fundamentally flawed and designed only to protect white privilege. In its incarnation as an educational tool, it asks our students to recognize this white privilege and to commit to activism to dismantle such privilege wherever they see it. Again, I'm not here to argue pro or against CRT, but rather to sunshine that some of the flaws are self-evident, as Thomas Jefferson would have said. For example, America has a history of immigration from all parts of the world. Historically, immigrants have not been welcomed with open arms, and they've been subjected to discrimination. In California, for example, the legislature passed in 1858 the Chinese Exclusion Act that made it illegal for any person of the Chinese or Mongolian race to enter the state. Prejudice against people of Asian descent has continued for a long time in California and in America. And yet today, Asian communities are among the most highly educated and most prosperous ethnic communities in the country, a fact that runs counter to the narrative that laws and policies continue to be designed to exclusive white benefit. Even Black and Brown communities have seen a significant improvement since the "I Have a Dream" speech of Martin Luther King. For example, a 2020 study of the Brookings Institution has shown a dramatic change from 1979 to 2019 in the composition of the American middle class that went from 84% white to 59% white, a very reasonable number, given that in the American population in 2019 was 57%. During the same time, Black representation in the middle class rose from 9% to 12%, a number that compares well with the fact that Blacks represent 13% of the American population. Thus, the insistence on the fundamentally racist nature of the United States is demonstrably false and is designed to diminish the reputation of the United States. The Chinese government is taking full advantage of our government's self-deprecating statements and to demoralize our youth. Little by little, inch by inch, CRT aims to convince our young people that this is not a country worth fighting for because it is the embodiment of oppression and racism. It is not unreasonable to affirm that critical race theory is designed to convey hostile, divisive, race-obsessed, poisonous, elitist, and non-inclusive ideas. In a free country, of course, we are not asking not to discuss these ideas. That's the purpose of this forum. In fact, we believe in the marketplace of ideas, and we welcome a robust exchange, again the purpose of this forum. More specifically, we would be happy to discuss CRT, as we will today, if its proponents were willing to embrace a self-critical approach and were willing to actually develop an actual theory with testable propositions, rather than a set of tenets exclusively focused on the economic and social theory of slavery. But the way in which CRT is proposed makes it ill-equipped to explain America's complex history and multifaceted cultures. CRT is ultimately an academic enterprise. Outside of academe, people view it very negatively, both as language and as a set of specific ideas. Its illiberal nature can be demonstrated best by the words of prominent scholars Richard Delgado and Jean Steffensen. Quote, "Critical race theory questions the very foundations of the liberal order, including equality theory, legal reasoning, enlightenment rationalism, and neutral principles of constitutional law." Our students need to learn about American history, racism, and cultures in an unabridged, apolitical, and balanced manner, so that they can better contribute to American citizenship, then become global citizens with respect to one another's differences. Indoctrinating them with contested theories as accepted truths is not the way to go. As a society, we also want to address existing issues of inequalities and disparities so that we can continue to perfect the recipe for justice and liberty. But using CRT or race-based thinking to guide our public policies is tantamount to fighting fire with fire. Generally speaking, we need intercultural and cross-cultural communication that promote inclusiveness and understanding, not an activist approach to tear down, divide, and socially engineer, as my own research program in health disparities and helping underserved populations in healthcare consistently demonstrates. In summary, to teach ethnic studies appropriately and carefully is very difficult and nuanced because it's a very complex subject to get right. CRT seems to highlight differences rather than emphasize evolution of different cultures and understanding of content from different groups. So if the question is whether our educational system should teach CRT, my answer is, why not at the university level? And why at the K-12 level, particularly in elementary school, as these are very high-level constructs, and provided it be taught together with other theories, either complementary or alternative to it? So let me be clear: I have no objections to the insertion of new content in a curriculum, though several questions should be asked. First, if new content is inserted into the curriculum, we should ask and be told what will need to be eliminated. Second, we should better understand why certain content is inserted. We read about ethno-mathematics, which sounds great, but what's the purpose? To show that non-white cultures were able to do significant mathematics in order to elevate the self-esteem of non-white students? This may be a reasonable effort, but why then not impress the point by showing how the mathematics that is used now comes exactly from a process where different cultures contributed to where we are now? We don't need much to show that mathematics we know now had its origin with Greek culture, then was pushed forward by the great Arab contributions of the years 800 to 1100, and then evolved into what we now consider modern mathematics. We can certainly showcase how other cultures also obtained similar results, such as the Chinese mathematicians who developed calculus independently of the West. As well, we read about what the framework calls "non-Western philosophers," and we are given a few examples from ancient Egypt. Will that mean we forget that many of the great philosophers of the West were in fact from Africa themselves? These are very heavy and difficult topics, in many cases supported by scant materials such as an Egyptian vizier that you can find on Gutenberg.org, who gives sentences about wisdom. But if the question is whether we should adopt it or embed it in the curriculum, then my answer is, what does it mean? Does it mean to reorganize all teaching programs in various disciplines on the basis of it? But if so, how should this be done? Are there clear didactic reasons that suggest this, or is this a political choice having political aims? In the second case, my point is not that these aims are not political minds, but simply that such a choice should be dictated by no political aim. If arguments are to be advanced for the adoption of this additional content, they have to be based on the identification of the didactic and scientific advantages of doing this choice, rather than any other choice. So, what are these arguments? If the question is not adopting CRT but changing the curriculum to reflect inclusiveness and understanding of culture and backgrounds, then look at the proposed curriculum and ultimately leave CRT apart from the discussion. In fact, this is where our efforts should be focused. Finally, are racial prejudices incorporated in the structure of our society? Probably yes, which is because of a history that has brought us to this structure, a history that can be studied but not changed nor judged. And when we look at the history, what we see are certainly some explicit tentatives of legally discriminating people on the basis of their race, but we also see significant advances. In fact, so this is where our efforts should be focused, in making economic welfare and education accessible, independently of race or ethnicity. And an important step in doing that is just that of excluding the category of race from our distinctive categories in the description of social structure. It is not by distinguishing whatever the aim might be, but by eliminating racial distinctions that we can better contribute to eliminating disparities. I'm eager to hear from our distinguished experts about the implementation and ramifications of the Ethnic Studies Curriculum in Orange County K-12 schools. I hope the public and media can also learn from the diverse viewpoints that we will be hearing from today. And our experts come from various academic ethnic backgrounds and are not confined to any particular industry. So I hope you enjoy what you're going to be learning today. Thank you very much for your time.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this precious opportunity to engage the public and the media in Orange County on these two important topics of ethnic studies and critical race theory. My name is Wen Yuan Wu. I am the Executive Director of Californians for Equal Rights Foundation, a nonprofit and nonpartisan organization dedicated to raising public awareness on all issues related to the costs of equal rights. It is my pleasure to join the Orange County Board of Education and our community partner organizations at this event. Since December last year, my organization has closely followed the administrative and legislative developments pertinent to ethnic studies and worked with our various local and state-level partner groups to educate the public on this topic through public seminars and research-informed advocacy. We have studied several drafts of the Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum, which is intended to become guidelines for local districts and also as a national blueprint. We have submitted policy recommendations, position letters, and joint statements to the state legislature and the California Department of Education urging our lawmakers and policymakers to ensure a transparent and fair process to creating a balanced ethnic studies paradigm. I want to talk about three main questions. What do we mean? Number one, what do we mean by ethnic studies? The legal definition according to AB 2016 is that ethnic studies is an interdisciplinary study of different ethnicities and cultures in the United States to prepare students to be global citizens with an appreciation for the contributions of multiple cultures. I support this kind of positive approach to ethnic studies, and I believe that the OCBE leadership, today's panel experts, and the vast majority of the public would agree with the non-negotiable importance of teaching cultures, history, and racism in our K-12 classrooms, so that our students become informed citizens with a cross-cultural understanding. The debate here is not whether or not an education entity should teach ethnic studies. This has long been settled among common sense education experts, educators, and community members. The million-dollar question here today is how a public education institution should teach ethnic studies. Should ethnic studies be taught to highlight tribulations, perseverance, and contributions, or just intra-group struggles? Should it be a standalone course for high school students? Or should it be infused as a pedagogical approach into various other disciplines across different grade levels? It is therefore oversimplifying and dishonest to paint different opinions about the ontology and epistemology of ethnic studies with a broad brush of opponents to ethnic studies, as shown by many sensational titles. Next, who gets to talk about ethnic studies? There seems to be a common misperception that only ethnic studies specialists of a particular brand of educator activists can dominate the public discourse and policy deliberations on this topic. To be blunt, one does need not to be well-versed in Marxism or even to read the Communist Manifesto to become an efficient red guard in Mao's China. By the same token, as an interdisciplinary field of scholarly inquiry, ethnic studies will benefit from intellectual fertilization of legal studies, history, sociology, economics, political science, anthropology, cultural studies, and so on. As a student of international studies, I had to take classes in all the aforementioned subjects in order to proficiently observe the causal and correlational processes of institutions, culture, and interest in shaping our political outcomes. We should not expect any less for ethnic studies. And based on the actual implementation of ethnic studies in some school districts where it is being promoted as an analytical and teaching approach to English, history, and even STEM classes, one should also deduce that educators with different backgrounds can have a say. Therefore, I fully trust that our distinguished experts, who have rich experience in classroom instruction, legal scholarship, policy advocacy, and social scientific research in various capacities, and have multicultural lived experiences, are more than qualified to discuss and inform the public in Orange County on how schools are teaching history and cultures and what the implications are. Last but not least, why are we even talking about critical race theory here? Because CRT is not only relevant, but also an ideological foundation for the observed practices of teaching ethnic studies through the models of critical ethnic studies and liberated ethnic studies. CRT is a contested and explicitly political theory that examines all social relations, economic governance, and policy outcomes through the lenses of race and systemic racism. Many pundits narrowly define CRT as just an academic approach within the realm of legal theory. On the contrary, I argue that CRT should not be judged in its intellectual details, but by its real-life applications. In California, ethnic studies in practice is a celebrated vehicle for CRT. Various drafts of state-level ethnic studies model curriculum, or ESMC, have had CRT or critical pedagogy principles baked into the guiding values in that they promote collective narratives of transformative resistance, racial healing, and critical hate, endorse a victim-oppressor dichotomy, emphasize political contributions to anti-imperial and anti-colonial movements in relationship to forms of power and oppression. The Liberated Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum, which closely resembles the state's rejected first draft of ESMC, presents CRT as a tool for, in I quote, "research and pedagogy for exposing, analyzing, and challenging the majoritarian stories of racial privilege and to shatter complacency, challenge the dominant discourse on race, and further the struggle for racial reform." The Hayward Unified School District recently publicized an ethnic studies policy in which the district's cause on its educators to engage and include liberated ethnic studies and critical race theory in implementing ethnic studies. The matter of fact here is that an overwhelming majority of Americans hold negative views on CRT and disagree with a worldview that filters everything through race and traces all adverse outcomes in life to racism. This has been validated by public opinion polls conducted by agencies across the political spectrum, from the Economist to the Heritage Foundation to CSG poll to the grassroots organization Parents Defending Education, to attribute the opposition to CRT. Or in other words, public demands for ethnic studies to absorb political or ideological underpinnings is an inaccurate correction of the bipartisan nature of a growing coalition for unity. The coalition is united against the corrosion of an inherently divisive ideology repackaged with fancy code names. My personal and professional appreciation goes out to the OCBE leadership, whose courage and commitment to government service have facilitated today's educational forum. Trustees at the Orange County Board of Education are true public servants elected by the people and working diligently for the people, so that the public can be sufficiently informed and proactively engaged in the community consultation process. At the end of the day, the implementation of ethnic studies in various districts in Orange County is of huge public interest and impacts students and families more than the educational establishment. The public deserves to know, not only from educational bureaucrats and Sacramento insiders who have a vested interest in pushing the critical ethnic studies paradigm. I want to thank the Orange County Board of Education for leading the way. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alina Kaplan, and I'm the co-founder of Alliance for Constructive Ethnic Studies, Aces for short, and it's an honor to be here together with my colleague Brandi Shufatinsky, who is also one of the leaders of Aces. Aces is a grassroots, nonpartisan coalition that's working to remove political agendas from ethnic studies and working toward an ethnic studies that fosters balance, balanced thinking, that fights racism, and that builds bridges of understanding among students and ethnic groups. I am a mom of two, I'm a longtime Democrat, and I'm also an immigrant from the former Soviet Union. The latter is how I got, the last of these is how I got involved with ethnic studies in the first place. A couple years ago, as I received a nonstop stream of emails that said, "You gotta look at this, you gotta look at this," from friends, colleagues across the board. It's crazy stuff. What can be crazy about an ethnic studies curriculum? I thought, right? I mean, ethnic studies is supposed to be good, it's supposed to be positive. That sounds great. I just left my job at a social services organization that's part of the largest nonprofit affordable housing organizations in California, and I had been running the social services part of that organization. So my first thought on reading the first draft of the curriculum was, how can this possibly be good for all these people that I've been working with, mostly people of color in our low-income housing, parents that are working so incredibly hard to give their kids a better future, to inspire them, to empower them, to teach them the opposite of victimhood? But my second thought was, wow, this sounds familiar. And as it turns out, it sounded familiar because before I immigrated to the U.S., I was pre-teen, I was 11, and the Marxist-Leninist indoctrination had just begun. So it sounded, all sounded kind of fuzzily familiar. So I reached out to other people, other immigrants from the former Soviet Union who immigrated as adults, and confirmed that, yes, indeed, these were the concepts and the language that we're seeing reflected in the Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum, that first draft, the ESMC. Unfortunately, a number of them actually said that they found it too traumatic to review it for me because they were just horrified by seeing this stuff reflected back at them. In fact, there was, I pulled out this quote from a petition that they put together that it's just this heartbreaking letter that says, that was written to the California Department of Education that said, "Never could we have imagined that decades later, the same ideology and concepts that we escaped would show up in all, of all places, the California Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum." The same story repeated from Chinese, Cuban, Venezuelan immigrants, the list goes on and on. So what is neo-Marxist dogma doing in a K-12 ethnic studies curriculum? So what is neo-Marxist dogma doing in a K-12 ethnic studies curriculum? Which is supposed to be focusing on building bridges of understanding between different groups and, in the words of Wen Yuan referenced this bill before, AB twenty sixteen, which is the law that mandated the development of the ESMC to prepare them to be global citizens and to foster an appreciation for the contributions of multiple cultures. It turns out that there is a specific discipline in college campuses called critical ethnic studies, it now also goes by liberated ethnic studies, and the professors in this field openly call themselves scholar-activists. The practitioners in the discipline talk about how they aim to, quote, "bring into conversation the ways that connected efforts and concerted efforts," sorry, "and collectivized resistance to U.S. imperialism ground our approaches for dismantling the neocolonial schooling apparatus." Okay, this is from Education at War, which is a seminal text for critical ethnic studies. More explicitly than that, we come across teacher trainings where teachers are instructed in ethnic studies trainings that capitalism and racism are equivalent, and so you see these charts where you have circles of the root is imperialism, and then you've got private property, genocide, religion, and racism, and so on. This liberated ideology, liberated ethnic studies ideology drove the ESMC's initial draft, and that's how we ended up with a list of one hundred and fifty-four, list of role models, people of color, that were predominantly neo-Marxist and/or violent figures. And importantly, I encourage you to take a look at our website to see who is missing on that list. So missing are MLK, Martin Luther King, John Lewis, Thurgood Marshall, and so on. One leader that was alarmed about the dismissal of these leaders in the CRT-based drafts of the ESMC was Clarence, Dr. Clarence Jones, who was the speechwriter for Dr. Martin Luther King. And Dr. Jones wrote of his, quote, "great concern for the perversion of history that is being perpetrated by such curricula." So the initial draft, as you probably know, was roundly condemned, not just by the public but also by countless mainstream public officials for blatant indoctrination and various forms of bigotry, and Governor Newsom specifically declared that, quote, "this draft will never see the light of day." So shockingly, now what we have is not only is this draft seeing the light of day, but it is happily marching through the state of California in the form of something called liberated ethnic studies. And proponents of this ideology claim that anything other than this very particular politicized brand of ethnic studies is not real ethnic studies, and openly exclaim that diversity and inclusion are not ethnic studies. And so you'll see signs at rallies saying diversity and inclusion are not ethnic studies, and they're not in liberated ethnic studies. So this sounds like a crazy complaint, but within that framework, it's not so crazy. This is why the ESMC ended up clarifying that at the college and university level, ethnic studies and related courses are sometimes taught from a specific political point of view. In K-12 education, it is imperative that students are exposed to multiple perspectives, taught to think critically, and form their own opinions. In response, the entire advisory committee that drafted the initial draft of the ESMC and consisted mostly of liberated slash critical, those are used interchangeably, ethnic studies activists and proponents requested to have their names removed from the ESMC. These proponents also consistently declare themselves as the only experts in the field of ethnic studies, which to me is kind of similar to a professor, professors that specialize in, let's say, Marxist history declaring that they are the only experts that are qualified to talk about how social studies should be taught in middle school or history in high school. So I will try to wrap up, I just wanted to dispel a couple of pieces of information. One, that you'll hear that this is a right or left issue. Our group leadership is made almost entirely of Democrats, most of our constituents are Democrats, ensuring that ethnic studies is taught in a constructive and positive way is absolutely not a left and right issue. Divisive, when we talk about the curriculum being divisive, a liberated or critical ethnic studies curriculum being divisive, it's not referring to talking about racism. We absolutely believe in talking about racism. It's referring to the idea of dividing students into victims and oppressors based on the color of their skin and pitting them against each other. Proponents of CRT talk about the opponents as being against talking about racism. And frankly, I will tell you personally and as one of the group leaders, that this is both ridiculous and offensive. We believe very deeply in talking about racism, we believe in talking constructively about potential solutions across the full spectrum. I have to say that ethnic studies has the opportunity to elevate the racism conversation altogether that we're having in this country, to build bridges, to bring students and groups together, but not if it puts them into boxes and pits them against each other. I'm disappointed that Professor Teresa Montano withdrew from this event, I would have really welcomed the opportunity to have an open and honest dialogue about how to best implement ethnic studies in Orange County and the rest of California. As conversations about ethnic studies continue, they become increasingly politicized and controversial. And Aces' hope is to bridge the gaps in understanding and bring community together, community members together around the common goal of providing an inspiring, empowering, united ethnic studies curriculum for all of California students. Now, doing this requires parents, educators, students, community members to demonstrate the courage and fortitude that it takes to stand up against divisive rhetoric, against divisive rhetoric, discrimination, and public bullying. And what we're doing here is nothing short of deciding how the next generation of Americans will interact with each other. So my hope is that we will model that for them both tonight and going forward. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone for their, their comments and speeches. I'd like to open it up now, if you'd like individual interviews with our experts that are here as well. So thank you for coming tonight, and we have about twenty-five minutes that we could do one-on-one interviews.